Hey, welcome everyone this evening. I'm very glad you're here.
We still have time?
Joining us are our faculty members. We want to thank everyone for coming. We thank our central office staff for all their hard work to get putting this together. We thank our students and also our faculty members for the long day coming out here and joining us. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm looking forward to a wonderful evening. Um, we will actually ask for the call, uh, our well called this one please.
Stephanie Walker. Hubert Miness.
Here.
Alyssa Anderson. Pete Wilderboard.
Present.
Josie Barnhart. Stephanie Craven.
Uh, right at the sign, uh, that's what we're gonna do is lead us in the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Uh, next, our next, uh, point of business is the approval of agenda, what your motion to put the agenda.
I believe we will.
First, second, do you have a first and second discussion? If not all, we can signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Cast is six to zero. Um, our end seat for this evening, Mr. Perdell, um, I'll turn it over to you at this time. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, everybody. I'm South Carolina Department of Education Officer for New Hanover County Schools. Yeah, they have slightly delayed the door. There's still people coming in.
Okay.
This is gonna be fairly easy. Um, on behalf of the New Hanover County School Board, welcome and thank you for your interest and active involvement. And tonight's one of the typical discussions on school culture and creating a supportive environment for teachers, students, and staff. Now, the format tonight is made up of a diverse blend of school personnel and interested members of the community and is an invaluable opportunity to share success, provide feedback, and offer solutions for improvement. Now, there are two sessions, so that means fifty-four seats, twenty-seven seats per session available to the community members. Um, we had thirty-four online sign up. It doesn't mean that they'll show up, but they did sign up and we're gonna do our best as people start trickling in to fill off these empty seats. Now, in addition to the sign up, the second session, there'll be a sign up sheet at the door for that second session. So, anybody that chose not to sign up for that and participate, and if there's enough seats available for those who participated in the first session, you are welcome to stay for the second one. Uh, there are three tables. And, uh, to facilitate focus and productive dialogue, we have organized the three tables, each with nine available seats for community members. This arrangement has been specifically designed to maintain, and by arrangement, I mean, you know, physical proximity of these tables. So, that way, we can optimize the effectiveness of each group's dialogue while minimizing the background noise. And that's crucial because you'll notice at the tables, there are microphones. And if you didn't know, uh, they've been on this whole time, so whatever you're talking about, we have them. Throughout the event, our board members will circulate among the tables, dedicating fifteen minutes each. So, these... Alright, hello? There's nobody...
You have the bear.
That's the bear sign on?
That's bear with the...
That's bear.
Bear with the...
Okay, uh, let me get back to it. So, fifteen minutes per table, so the board members will circulate those fifteen minutes. And that way, you'll all have an opportunity to speak to each one of the board members. But it's a very short time. Um, all other attendees, you're expected to remain at the tables. So, while the board members moving around, uh, and, and of course, you know, you need to take care of business, go ready. Um, the second session, same exact thing. So, if you wanna stay for the second session and there's available seats, it's gonna be the same ground rules. The insights and perspectives shared during these discussions are of immense value to the school board as they contribute significantly to the strategic goals and the development of the district. So, what you talk about here tonight is very important. We definitely appreciate you being here and willing to talk about it. It's important to keep to the time limit set. The discussions at each table, as noted, they will be recorded. And those recordings will be made available on our YouTube channel. So, you know, shortly after, if not tonight, by tomorrow morning, they'll be available. Each, each table, labeled. Uh, okay, so here's some ground rules that I must go over. We kindly request that all attendees observe respectful behavior in accordance with the New Hanover County Board of Education, all to the audience procedures and rules of the court. So, silence all cell phones during the discussion. You can have them on, just, just say they have them silenced. Remain respectful and courteous to all of the attendants. Refrain from using language that is lewd or obscene. Shouting, calling out, and/or making disruptive noises during discussions, that, that's prohibited. And keep the discussions focused on school culture and to create a supportive environment for teachers and student staff, which is one of our strategic goals for the district. Now, the list should be on the screens, so it looks like we've got all tables. Do we have any empty seats at this time? Okay, that, one of those seats is mine.
One over here.
Okay, so we have one.
One over here.
Two.
There'll be one right here.
So, and three. So, do we have anybody in the audience that would like to take the bear also?
The bear. Is that bear space somewhere else?
Okay. Well, if that's the case, thanks again for your participation. The fifteen minute clock will start now. Thank you.
Are you gonna read? I thought you were gonna facilitate. Or not? Sorry?
For now. But once I move, these notes are coming with me.
Yeah.
Or table two.
Just, just on, on behalf of the board, I, I just wanna thank everybody for being here this evening just because I think this is really important. I think that climate school, you know, we are the, one of the highest paid school systems in the county, assuming the state. However, you know, what happens in a school each and every day is, you know, paramount. Students, uh, the faculties, the, uh, teacher assistants, the, uh, bus drivers, the cafeteria workers. You know, we wanna make it a great place, a great learning environment for everyone. So, um, I just wanted to say that on the front. So, again, thank you so much for being here. We, you know, we wanted to get the feedback so we can use that in a positive way to improve our schools.
What is your name?
I'm Pete Wilderboard, the board chair. And this is Melissa Mason, she's a board member.
Okay.
Why don't we do that? I think that's a great way to start. Why don't we go around, you know, the, the table and we can introduce ourselves? So, would you start?
Yeah, my name's Aubrey, I'm a student at Yonkers.
Next, Melissa, second director of the branch, behavioral model specialist.
Awesome. Thank you.
My name is Bernadette Pedrick, I'm a nurse practitioner.
Awesome.
My name is Loretta Stackhouse, I'm an advocate for kids. I'm retired and I think going around doing this is taking up part of our fifteen minutes with you.
We'll be quick.
My name is Phil Marks and I'm a surgeon here.
Great.
Hall-Sloven principal at Watersnak Elementary School.
Tiffany Salter, parent, mental health, um, professional, and I agree with Ms. Stackhouse.
Valerie Noel, parent of three, almost four, uh, at Ogden and Noble.
Lindsay Hudson, a former student, current parent and staff member. I can't hear anybody.
Donna Gargan, I have two children in the school system. I also have a nonprofit that serves, uh, kids that have dyslexia and ADHD.
Brian Jones, school social worker, twenty-three years, former New Hanover County student and former New Hanover County parent.
Awesome.
I'm Lisa Crocker, I'm the seventh congressional district for the Democratic Party treasurer. Have no kids, but I'm deeply concerned about our school.
Well, thank you, thank you. We'll go ahead and start by talking about the positives. So, what do you think is going well in, uh, New Hanover County schools? And, and anybody just, you know, just gonna jump in and we're gonna take notes on it? And then, of course, we'll talk about maybe some concerns and, you know, and then solutions. Anyone?
Well, one thing I think that is going well is the worst recent policy change that you did. The, the most recent policy change where they stopped suspending five, six, seven children under eight years old for misbehaving. If they, I mean, if they have gun or drugs or whatever, then they need to go home. But when they're being disrespectful, saying no, having a temper tantrum, you don't send them home. And they, they did change that policy and I'm just excited about it.
Good. We're talking about some positives.
Okay, alright, perfect.
At this point, we talked about some, uh, getting changed in, in the suspension policy.
Okay, I was, I can't get to the documents, I'm just gonna write.
Okay.
So, this is one of the highest paid counties?
Yes, ma'am.
So, the teachers are well compensated in this county?
Well, it, it just, yeah, it just, yeah, well, overall...
Compared to the rest of the state, yes.
Yes, yeah, exactly.
Compared to the rest of the state.
Yeah, yeah, thank, thank you, exactly.
The majority of their pay comes from the state.
But then, there's a local supplement and our local supplement used to be the highest, but now in the top three or four. So, they do get that additional money, so, and every little bit helps.
And we appreciate it.
But evidently, pay isn't what keeps our teachers air because we're losing a lot of teachers that have lots of years of service. And that's not good for our kids. We, I mean, we have to have new teachers to learn and, and, and be ready for the older teac, I mean, the more mature teachers retire. But when the mature teachers are throwing up their hands and saying, "I'm outta here," that's not good for our kids.
Well, so are the new teachers. They're saying, "This is not what I find, therefore, I can't teach." And that's what, what really frustrates me.
Okay.
So, I would assume that's probably gonna come up soon. On that note, I'd like to say, one of the things, being, being an employee of New Hanover County Schools for twenty-three years is when you're having conversations like this, um, I like to call it more than just multi-level, this is multi-dimensional because in the past twenty-three years, I don't recall this being as often. And I think I, I'm seeing New Hanover County Schools doing more listening of everybody from every which direction, which is very necessary if you're gonna be relevant, modern, and current for everybody.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Cause, you know, I'm, I'm a former New Hanover County employee also. I was here until two thousand and four and then, then went to other, two other counties. But I think it is vital and I think that's why we're here. You know, the reason we're here tonight is to hear and, but, you know, not only to hear where we're at, you know, what's, what's good, what's bad, but also hopefully we have some solutions that, you know, we can as a board or as, as central office staff. Ms. Barnum has joined us now and she's, she's central office staff and, um, you know, so we wanna hear, we wanna hear not only the good, the bad, you know, but also, hey, and this, this, this could be a possible way to go. Can, can I hear from, uh, one of our principals?
Sure.
Good, bad, whichever side.
I think there's a lot of celebrations, um, every day, there's, there's different celebrations. And I'm sure the, the celebrations, um, look a little different, um, you know, depending on the school and depending on the day, really, and what they have going on. But just, uh, just to touch back on, I started thinking what Mr. Jones was saying and then what the, the point about teachers leaving and no matter what point they are in their careers. And, um, I'm not thinking as to why, cause I think there could be a lot of reasons why and it'd be hard for me to describe what that is right now. But I think the, the factor that keeps our teachers in the classrooms and in their buildings, um, it's not the money, we already said that, it's the relationships, the relationships that they can build with their students and the relationships that they can build with their administrators and the relationships that they can build with the community. So, the more that we can establish those programs, uh, frameworks, whatever you wanna call it, things that we can do to build relationships is how we're gonna keep our teachers, in my opinion, in, in the building, happy to be there, and that will trickle right down to the students, happy to be there as well.
Yeah, to have, you know, I always said, happy teachers equal a lot, most of the time, happy students. Not always, but, you know, that's, that's a good analogy. Others, it would like to say?
I'm gonna pick you back off of that, if it's okay. Um, because I, I agree that the teachers and the staff are our most valuable asset, one hundred percent. Um, I've read the, the most recent teacher survey, um, which stated that only thirty-three percent of staff think that there's an atmosphere of trust and mutual respect within the district, not in their schools. In the schools, it was actually above sixty percent. So, they feel like they can have respect and trust within their schools. But within this district, they overwhelmingly state they do not feel respected. Um, and to add to that, fifty-three percent reported safety concerns, including physical conflicts, vandalism, bullying. Um, and then, so I'm just wondering, like, with that level of dissatisfaction and that feeling of mistrust, how do we expect to keep, keep them?
Mm-hmm. That's a good point, that's a good point. And just in case anybody doesn't know, the Teacher Working Condition Survey comes out every two years and it'll be up. It'll be out again in twenty twenty-four, so, and that's a great tool. Yeah, so, yes, sir?
I hear the language or the culture that's constantly being developed around the term of public safety. But you seldom ever hear of public health. Public health approaches to address violence, right, within the schools. When you have teachers, they feel comfortable, they feel good. I don't see holistic approaches to deal with violence in our school. I don't see the data where we do a root cause analysis and using upstream, like, thinking and models to address certain issues. It's pretty much, a lot of times, this reaction is after something has happened, then we begin to respond. And, and the methodology, I don't see evidence-based approaches where whatever, whatever thing that you're, you're doing, is it backed by evidence? Or are we just Band-Aid fixing a thing, go as we get along? So, that's what I kinda see as far as the culture in the schools is that a lack of support and a lack of, um, evidence-based approaches. And this is like nineteen years, like advocating for children, juvenile justice, adult probation and parole. Um, and when I look at the cases, thirty percent of those cases, now we're at fifty percent of those cases, those crimes stem from the schools. So, that's an issue.
That's a big issue, yeah.
Yeah, I think there's an over criminalization that is happening, especially in our high schools. Um, and it starts in these lower grades where these behaviors are being treated as aggressive or they're being termed, you know, the, the use of terms that aren't really applicable.
Yeah.
I understand if a child does something in the second grade, he misbehaved, maybe he got suspended. It's a permanent document that's in his file. Now, he's in the eleventh grade or twelfth grade and he has a bad day. Well, they go all the way back to the second grade documentation and say, "Oh, this is normal for him."
Yep. That's not okay.
Well, it happens, it happens.
Of course.
So, the, the process, we've got kind of a gap between what are the processes versus what, versus what are actually common practice? So, the board can build policies and then adopt protocols that staff, um, use. But then, what is the common practice? And those are, those are often two different things. And one of the, the real barriers to that is what is the culture around the approach to challenging behavior in a classroom? And, um, to kinda, trying to collect notes, my, for whatever reason, I can't take notes in the document, but I do have the questions now.
Good, good.
So, um, so, listening to, you know, we're not, we, we might assume if we don't see common practice that nothing is in place from a policy or procedure perspective. But those really are from two different lenses. So, how do we, um, how do we come to a place of building a culture to approach challenging behavior of students in a, an instructive, safe, supportive, instructive manner as opposed to a removal? Because removal means instruction stops.
Right.
But it doesn't mean all instruction stops. It depends on the kind of removal. So, thinking from, and, and, and I've, I'm gonna have to lean over toward my, my principal friend over here. Conversations that, um, we have with our principals many times is, you know, yeah, we have the evidence base. We have the, we have the practices, we have the approaches. But we also have such a prioritization of teaching to the academic pacing guide. We've got a lot of work that's gotta be done. And you're really expecting every teacher, and I'm saying this from being the teacher that was a teacher of kids with behavior disorders, right? You're, you're expecting on the fly, in the moment, I've got my tool belt on and I know which tool to grab so that I keep instruction going, but I'm also not, um, separating this kid and differentiating this kid in a negative way away from, from, uh, the work we have to do. So, one of the really powerful questions that I think might help kinda generate some conversation for our board members is, um, how could, how could the school board support that work that's been identified in the schools? Cause we think about, well, having policies that are, you know, gauged toward safe, supportive, instructive processes that's in place, developing procedures that allow the staff to, or that support the staff in implementing those. Where's the gap? So, I think that's part, part of the conversation.
Um, what about the resiliency task force? Like the pilot schools, what happened to those? It, I know it occurred during the pandemic and so now I don't know if those are still happening.
What do you mean occurred?
Um, well, there were pilot schools that were going to be trained, like staff, um, were going to be trained around the resiliency model.
Through community and schools.
Yes.
It, it's, it's, it still is.
Yes.
But, but the, the problem is, is this, is you have to specialize in a certain field. Of course, education, you have your evidence-based approaches, but the risk factors that we're dealing with in school is pretty much violence. So, there has to be somebody that specializes in some of the social determinants, but that relates to violence. So, you have the community health worker, uh, profession, but it's community health workers that's clinical, but then there are community health workers that specialize in violence. Those are the ones that need to be targeted because right now in, in the high schools, you have this thing with marijuana. But due to the fact that we're not researching, a lot of the marijuana that you're finding, it's not marijuana, it's K-2.
What's K-2?
What's K-2?
See, this is the problem. You see, this is the problem. We need to be educated about what we are seeing and what we are witnessing. And, and that's the thing, we are so divided with our education and our cultural awareness. We are identifying things and it's not necessarily it. So, how can we do a root cause analysis if we're not, and how can we address things and we are not properly defining things and educating ourselves? So, that's the thing, it's education and then there is, uh, 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 public safety and then there's a, um, um, public health approach to dealing with some of the social determinants or so-called violence.
Well, and, and, and keep in mind, all of the board's policies are gonna be written from an instruction, academic instruction, academic content, content perspective, so, yeah.
Well, thank you, thank you.
Because I know Gregory was one of the pilot schools, but it's not happening anymore.
So, that's...
Then go continue the assignment.
That's my plan.
No, they used to be, they're becoming their board group.
Absolutely, yeah.
What sort of training are the teachers receiving to handle these sorts of situations?
Right, so teachers get the association training.
Excuse me, sir. What was your name again?
Brian Jones.
I, I come to a lot of the meetings.
Okay, okay.
But I really wanna connect with you because my mom's a psychologist over in CMS. And so, I'd like to hear from your experience and everything.
I got six years and ten months left, not that I'm counting. Six years, ten months.
What do our teachers that work with kids with special needs get?
Great. Just FYI, we've already introduced ourselves to each other.
Okay. Well, hello, welcome, I'm glad, I'm sorry.
Somebody mentioned your phone. I got your number, no problem.
Stephanie Walker, school board member.
Josie Barnhart, school board member.
Three spacing, G back in the office. I'm just listening this time, because Julie's got the tape.
Yeah.
So, it's just...
She's got your question.
Yeah, yeah.
I was told that Sarah and I asked a question. There needs to be a broad stroke in order to learn the general...
I would like to start out by finding out who's the staff member.
It wasn't part of my teacher education and I was, yeah, I don't know if it is now, I mean...
I, oh, I am Julie.
Julie, no, Julie, yeah.
Ms. Lindsay, Sister Lindsay, you guys seem to not coming to me.
I just wanna know who's staff, who's staff.
And then everyone's community, and did you say you were working at, no?
Um, no, I'm a parent of three.
Which is important.
Almost four.
Almost four.
And I'm in this, I'm in this school. Well, he'll be, I have one and fourth in kindergarten next year.
Okay.
You said, "I'm a parent of three and almost four."
Was there anything that you graduated from?
No, 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 no. No, 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 no. Yeah, sorry.
Oh, we started.
See, I'm not, I was having a teacher voice like you. Is there anything y'all didn't finish talking about you wanna talk about?
Yeah, and it was requested, it was requested that we come back to that question. Okay, so, um, how could the school board support the work in the schools? And the work in the schools that was being discussed was... So, we're all just gonna be competing.
Yeah, sorry, really.
Yeah, no, that's okay, I'm happy to do it. And somebody's gonna be like, "Julie's too loud." Um, how could the school board support the work in the, your work in the schools? And the work that we were talking about is really that, that disconnect in, um, challenging student behaviors and then the response that supports kids being maintained in the instructional setting. But while teaching students, but also preparing our teachers to be more trauma-informed, using an evidence base, addressing from a public health perspective, really understanding the true, um, um, risk factors that are leading to, rather than a zero tolerance of, "Oh, you did that, now you have to be out."
For the rest of your life.
So, they were really getting into that. Did I capture that?
Yeah.
Enough?
Did we get any answer with the last room? Would you share what you were saying about your, getting the certain teams to teach the teachers or something?
Yes, the community task force and the community resiliency model that, you know, the pilot schools that were happening before the pandemic occurred. Um, and then Julie was saying that it changed to trauma-informed teaching as the training that, like, replaced that and that it's, you know, more school-specific. But, I mean, I'm thinking in general, isn't it a good thing to have that broader understanding of trauma and what it means and, and have that community input as opposed to it being this siloed thing within each school?
It's a lot of siloing going on.
Right.
I know that for sure.
And, and one of the, one of the points was really, like, where trauma-informed teaching maintains a place in the budget, which it...
I was gonna say, how can the school board, uh, budget? Definitely, if, if we can figure out how to make that work every year. Um, I'm, this is my third year doing budget, you know, budget season and it's a little frustrating because there's never enough money that you want to go around and you hear what you hear and you want more money to go toward more assistance in the classroom or more trauma, you know, I talk about ACES probably too much, but the trauma-informed stuff, I just think is super important because I think, we talk a lot about academics and I think that's what, that, that's what we're here to do, right? Teach kids, but at the same time, you gotta address the trauma-informed stuff. Especially at our, our higher priority schools. And then we've had a lot of discussions in the task force about that, um, and how do we, how do we fix it?
Yes, sir? If I can ask you something real quick, like, Stephanie, when you speak about, when you speak about ACES, to tell you the truth, um, ACES in itself is really outdated, adverse childhood experiences. Now, the new thing is adverse community experiences.
Oh, yeah, it does broader than that.
Yeah, it's broader than that. We're still stuck in the past dealing with adverse...
Still dealing with my first, that ACES.
We're dealing with adverse childhood experiences, not understanding that the ecological effects of, it's the environment, it's the system.
Yes.
It's the structures that, and it's the systemic things that plays a major role. So, sometimes we need to shift our...
I don't think it's easy, and or, it's, it's can be both.
But I've gotta jump in, being a school social worker, when you say we're stuck on that, um, all of us are not still on that page quite yet. Um, yeah, because, because, I, I think what a lot of people have not asked is when our educators are educated and they are highly educated and what are they trained for is a part of their training, the additional things we're asking them to address.
Yes.
And I, I've met some great, wonderful teachers from back in the day till, till, until now. But what part of their education, I'm not, I'm not talking about my coworkers, I'm talking about our education system as in college. What part of that do they have time to address with all the new challenges, with every paradigm shift? One professor, you couldn't pass this class if you didn't understand the paradigm shift. I, I passed it, I ain't gonna tell you which time, but I passed it.
The last time y'all that passed.
To your point, Matt, like, I think there's a lot of people that don't even know what adverse childhood experience is anyway. So, bringing your point up is, is a very good point, but we gotta get people to understand what ACES are from the get-go. Cause, cause I, I talk about ACES, sometimes they're like, "What are you talking about? I don't even know what that is." But you, you are right. And because of the way we're districted, you know, a lot of the trauma are in, in, in a few schools and... They need the most help. And they need the most help, which means they need the most resources, they need the most, you know, training or everything.
Yeah, so, one of... Oh, I'm sorry. I wanna, I wanna clarify one thing about our educational model. So, ACES comes from more of a public health model. Our teachers don't get necessarily that training. We have our school-based mental health workers that are in our schools and our school nurses. They are trained in a public health model. Our teachers and including Brian, as a school social worker, that certification process is based on addressing barriers to... Our teachers and including Brian, as a school social worker, that certification process is based on addressing barriers to learning. Because we ha, are only in control of the school environment and the school house. We know that any kind of situation in the environment can be a barrier to learning. But our role is specifically that, not with enough to create a diagnosis. It's enough to remove the barrier to learning and get the kid back to learning. So that's why you're going to, you're going to ask a hundred teachers, how many of you really understand Aces? I'm going to be surprised if you come up with one or two, because that's not in their body of evidence base. Their evidence base is, is barriers to learning, sorry.
You know, I was going to ask, then how is all that married to or come to be part of what happens then for these kids that have disabilities? I mean, because we know they're special and that, and they're part of the, the classroom and whatever, however they're taught. Um, I'm not a, a special needs person, I'm, you know, I just know that they have special needs. And I know when they're in the classroom, I mean, that creates another road that the teacher has to go down.
Yes.
We're asking a lot of the teachers. Yes, we're asking a lot of the teachers.
Exactly, exactly, exactly.
Can I just add, can I just add to that? Ms. Barnum is better, um, prepared to speak on this than I am, but there is a segment of, of our school system, the E C services, that are highly trained to, to do that, to work with students with disabilities. And then we have student support. The question I would like to ask, and I hope I don't get in trouble when I say this, is, um, I'm, I'm from New Hampshire County Schools. A part of what helped us with the trauma and things of that nature was, um, the church and the community.
The community, the community.
And, and, but that was a huge part. A lot of our kids, when I was, when I was growing up, who had problems, who couldn't focus, because our teachers, our cafeteria leaders, bus drivers and all the rest, were a part of our church and everything. It made, for Wilmington, it was a huge, um, thing. Take, for example, when it was time to go skating at Sports World or Sunset, if you've been here long enough, we, you ran into each other, you identify with church. So that if by chance during the summertime, if you stayed with grandma in town, you were visiting. And that is a big, that was a big piece that, that the school leaned on, because when I was in school, our teachers knew everybody in your community. And things, again, that paradigm has changed. So I, 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 I love the fact that we're holding the school accountable, but, but when we were pulling in the resiliency task for, task force, what other agencies do we have that can be a part to help us with all this? Because there are other agencies that are responsible for reporting on this trauma, whether it's a report to D S S or a report to a.
So Bron, what do you think happened? What do you think changed? Why do you think that's no longer the way? Everybody moved away.
I think.
If I answered, I'll never be asked to speak at another church.
Well, um, I'll speak wherever. I think what changed was when we, uh, moved in different parts of the county, into different communities.
Started growing and leaving.
Um, moved away from where we went to church, um, from walking to church to riding to church. Um, I think that had, that made a big difference. Growing up in this county, you went to church in your community. I walked Tenth Street my whole life for church and school, from Tenth and Lares to Tenth and A, my whole life. Everybody up and down the block moved between churches, school. And then all the other churches in the community, the children went to the vacation Bible school and all the other programs they had, so everybody knew everybody.
So you think people just moved out?
People moved out.
Well, I wonder too, though, how difficult it is for, for people to get in to the schools, you know? Like, I, I know that we have to have appropriate barriers for safety, but how are we really forging those relationships within the community and with the other schools and with agencies?
Who's obligated to do that?
It's kind of tough, it's kind of tough.
Well, we do have some, we do have some community outreach.
Yeah.
I'm not supposed to talk, but.
Yeah.
My, my time is the next session at six, but we do have some community outreach. Um, and, um, one of the things that I would say is, I think people have good feeling and, and say things. But if you ask your average neighbor, how many of them are actually going to the school and asking, how can I help?
Right.
Because I, I know about, I, I know what all the things you're saying, you're, you're saying kids are dealing with, but the power of an adult that I'm going to see there weekly and just be a support for me.
It's huge.
If I, it's huge, it doesn't take a lot of time. So that's what I'd be saying, is to district people. I, I, I hear you guys talking a lot about what the issues are. My question to you is.
I mean, this is what I'm at this lady, as we were volunteering.
Reading buddies. Yeah.
So I was in public schools not too long ago. I didn't go to New Hanover County Schools, I went to another school system in North Carolina. Um, but one of the really neat policy aspects that we had is we had a mentor program. Where these kids who were having these minor, what we classify as minor behavior issues, they would be assigned a mentor. And that mentor would be with them, be a stable person in their life until graduation. Um, I, some of my friends have mentors and they still talk and were graduated from the public school system. Um, and I think that's a really powerful policy position that maybe.
There is some that going on. Because you wonder if black men were into women's.
No, so they would start in kindergarten and they would follow them all the way up. They'd have the same mentor from kindergarten all the way through 12th grade.
And they would know that kid well, right?
They would know that kid, they'd give them Christmas gifts, they were there for them.
And, and so are these volunteers or staff members?
Completely volunteers.
Right, so we do have, and, and I think you should mention that again, say that louder.
There is a, a group called, uh, 100 Black Men.
Yeah.
And they have a, a program where they go into, I think they're in Williston Middle School.
Mm-hmm.
And they meet with the kids and, and do different things with them. Um, it just take, unfortunately, it takes retired people that have time, um, that they're willing to give. Um, it's hard for a working person that has kids to have time to mentor and volunteer. So it's really where you have to go and plead to, to the retirees in the county. And we have a lot of retirees.
I really do.
But one of the perfect agencies, when I worked at Riceboro, we had employees from G E that would come and do tutoring.
Well, that's because they do, they do, yeah, and I think, um, those used to too, I think.
You've got, you've got churches that will adopt schools, you've got Rotary groups that will adopt schools. I mean, and principals get requests a lot. Another aspect of that is also ensuring that you're only allowing people to come in and have contact with, with students that are safe to do that.
Absolutely.
And then a lot of volunteers are going to say, no, thank you, I'm not going to do the background check, or I'm not going to pay for that, or I'm not going to be consistent. But there, but there are many volunteer situations that go really, really well.
But on that note, are you all familiar from the community? I'm asking, are y'all familiar with the term key adult?
What?
So, so key adult.
Key adult.
So, so it's the same thing as a mentor.
Yeah.
It's knowing who in the school a child feels safe with, who they can speak with. And so one of the challenges I present is that some of the language is not yet shared. I, I'm sure the board, as, as well invested as they are into the school system, they're not familiar with some of the terms too. And all of that has not been brought about, the term key adult helped me, came about.
What is that linked to? I don't know.
Oh, my, key adult, key adult.
Oh.
I was training under Dr. Smith and then Ms. Lee and Cindy Bliss. So a key adult was a terminology we were using, um, to identify, to help.
You used it in the I S program.
Say again?
The I S program.
Thank you.
Empowering, empowering use and ga, engaging use and power.
Oh, is that a memory? I thought it was before that. Yes, and all of our middle schools did that, but key adult is something that every school needs to know. It's the same principle as a safe place, it's knowing who in the building a child relates to for whatever reason. You may not know why, but for some reason, that child relates to this adult, there's something in them that they see, um, about themselves or vice versa.
Can I ask you?
Big, I think, I think when we were thinking like this is a district, it gets so big. What I would say to you guys is, how many of you guys are willing to be mentors right now? How many of you willing to do that, right? So sign up and you can email.
Either one of us.
Anybody at this table, because to think about this is what can the district do as a whole? We've got to start small, because that program that you was talking about, I assume principals do it in their buildings.
Right, and you've got a school social worker sitting right here that would take every one of your names to be a mentor.
Yeah, I mean, seriously.
Well, I'm just trying to be a reading buddy.
That's good, that's good, though, I mean, that's.
Who's determined the key adult? Who in the building is determining?
Any social worker and say, I want to be.
No, but I'm saying like the schools that have.
I'm making you. Key adults, who in the building is determining who the key adult is for each kid?
We would all have their check in. Yeah. Our social workers.
There are different ideas.
Any, I, I can't protect the community sometimes.
I'll email you.
Yeah, yeah, please do. Yeah, that's, that's another.
Saying, who's got these characteristics? This is really important to this kid.
Consistency.
It's going to be a, a problem. That student level solution. I agree with what I'm saying. It can be a district policy. It's not going to happen as a grassroots approach to being in this.
Okay. Who would lead that in school, though, like now, right now, at, at Nobly? Who would be, who would lead it? But there's only two. We've only had two counselors now and they all just got 50 new students or 100, however many new students. So I don't know when they would do it. I guess that's what I'm thinking.
It's part of what they do. So.
If we, if we want to. The first time they had it this way.
I mean, if we want to have more staff than we do now, I think we do better in these counties, but we don't have enough. We need more. Teachers and everything. But you know, that comes from our tax base and our legislative system. They just try to. We don't, we're not, we can't generate funds.
I think that's a good point.
So they don't come out of their same budget.
So how, does the school board work with the, the county commissioner at all?
They, that would be something to mention to the school board, is it mental health and safety? Yes.
I was hoping, would anybody switch with me so that Hugh and I don't like sit next to each other? Not that, not that I don't like him, but I just feel like we're more integrated.
They don't say.
Can I, can I ask? No, someone told me.
So that question would sound like if we are not having to pay for S R O's or budgeted funds, why? Why would we be, why would we be there to help you? So we have no.
So thanks.
Yeah, I know that, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
We don't, so money comes from the states essentially for S R O's, we can't rate alians. So we don't use our, we don't choose to.
Ms. Barnum.
But the funding questions.
So.
They started.
Yeah, I know, I, we're going, so, um, thank you for tolerating this speed dating program. Um, I, I feel like, I feel like it's, I don't like it either. I feel like it's Groundhog Day and you're having to like start all over, but, um, if you, for the third time. So speaking of starting over, if we could do a quick go-around just to tell us, tell Mr. McManus.
We don't want to do that.
We know each other, we know each other, we just need y'all to introduce yourselves, just trust me. I'll explain.
I don't know you.
But it takes time.
They don't want you to know.
Okay, who are, who are my educators? I know, I have one year.
Well, not like right now, but.
Former.
All right, well then, then let's just jump right in.
Plus parents.
So, um, is, is, has someone been guiding you through some of these questions or are you guys just jumping?
We've really been sticking to one.
We've had one conversation that's been really flowing.
Okay, do we want to, do you all want to continue that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so, so tell me the topic that you all were talking about.
So we're talking about how the school board can support our work in schools.
Okay, that's good.
And the work is really addressing what shows up as challenging behavior in the classroom, but very much rooted in public health issues. Um, maybe Aces, maybe other barriers to learning and talking about what is really needed and what's needed from a school board perspective. We've talked about what's needed from a community perspective, we've talked about mentors, we've talked about school-based health.
Okay, okay.
But from the school board, and then they, we were kind of at that point.
So I have a.
Okay, let's, let's keep going.
In this vein, we were, we were talking about key adults and mentors. And I had asked, well, who in the school is going to determine who the key adult is?
The kid.
And I was like, Ed.
The kid, the kid, right.
Because it's who they trust.
Yes, that's who we, that's, yes, that's.
Because that would be who you'd gravitate to.
Then we have a problem that we need to address, because all the kids are leaning towards just so-and-so or so-and-so. So as an administrator, I can, you know, work with that.
Yes.
And kind of see where we need to make improvements or change mindsets or something, which I feel like hits a lot of the topics that we've been discussing on there. But I like the idea of, and I don't do key adults, we do, but we, we use different terms, but that just model to, to make sure that every student has someone to go to.
And it's a part of that check and connect, it's a part of that, that's an evidence-based strategy that pulls that, that's that newer version of that key adult.
It builds relationships, it builds trust, it builds all the things that we're talking about.
It builds community.
Yes.
That's what we're losing.
Yes.
That's what this conversation is about, right?
Okay.
We're losing community on, on every level, so how do you create it? Part of that means, I don't know anything about educating, I've educated physicians for 30 years.
Well, you know a lot about education then.
Not on this level, but the point is, it feels to me, at least, that we're asking teachers to do too much these days.
Absolutely, yes.
So how do you get help in doing that, Greg? You go to the community, how do you go to the community? I don't know the answer, but there's plenty of people coming down here with areas growing, with industries, a ton of industry, go to the industry leaders. Have people speak at their board meetings.
There's so much money here.
Bring a mentor with you with a kid, you know, those kind of things connect with the community, that's the only way you're going to do this. Teachers don't have enough time to do this.
They don't.
And teachers are walking away in droves. An article by Patrice Faison-Bason speaking, our biggest problem. Patrice.
Right beside you.
They're quoting you in here saying that the biggest problem is the boss of the team revolving door, teachers coming in and out. So if we haven't got this. A million years ago when I was in high school, we moved from a nice neighborhood to a wealthier neighborhood. And, and the nicer neighborhood, the original neighborhood, I was about seven miles away to a really poorly functioning school. We moved to a nicer neighborhood, I went to one of the top high schools in Southern California, same county. I was shocked as a kid at how different the education level was in the same county, between a richer and a poorer neighborhood.
Same county.
So I'd like to know, why are we, why are we taking care of the kids in the poorer neighborhoods that really need the help?
I think it's also really important to kind of mention what everybody has been echoing, and that's resources. Um, our educators are there to educate, they're there to teach, they're not experts.
They're not enjoying.
They're not experts in behavior management.
Exactly.
We have school psychologists, it's a whole profession, school counselors. Um, and most of the time, these kids, that key adult is going to be a school counselor or a school psychologist who knows how to deal with behavior management or social workers.
But what happens, and what happens to the kid in the classroom before they get to their key person? We have some teachers who aren't, aren't the best teachers too, they really shouldn't be teaching, they have a lot of prejudices and a variety of levels. And they start targeting the kid as a negative child before he even gets to the key person. So I'm also really educating the teachers like crazy about mental health and well-being and the problems these poor kids have to go through.
Are maybe having an adequately staffed school psych system or school social worker or school counselors? Because a lot of the times, these schools don't have a school psychologist. They might not, they might have a social worker who's bouncing between schools and only gets to spend an hour or two at every school.
Yeah, that's crazy. So to speak, to speak to that.
Don't we have social workers at every school?
No, I don't think so.
Not full-time social workers.
We're sharing, we're back to sharing.
There are not full-time social workers at every school.
You do not have full-time.
We're back to sharing, if we were good.
And just so you'll know.
Before this year.
If you went back and listened to some of our board meetings, we did. And some of us tried really hard to maintain that level. So now we have to figure out how we get back to that level. Because we all know, you all have brought it to us, our children exhibit that, that this is not the same school system as it was in, and anywhere than before 2020. Kids and families and everybody have gone through trauma that we won't ever even know, you know, psyche, you know, that kind of stuff. So we, we are, some of, some people on the board, I can't speak for our whole entire board, but we are, we are committed to trying to get some of those extra resources. Um, and, and then Ms. Ms. Barnum attempts to engage contractors where we can, you know, to help us in the, the areas where our teachers aren't, as you, as you noted, aren't the experts, you know, in that.
So the real.
I'm going to say something, okay.
The, well, I was just going to mention, the real, the real issue is that we have so many barriers to learning and it's overwhelming for every teacher to respond to every barrier to learning. And there really aren't enough folks with the number of needs we have, the number of risk factors, unless every teacher also becomes a clinician as well as an instructor. And, and that is possible, it's not likely. And that's not what everybody was trained for.
We need to go back to the education system so the teachers are trained and all these things.
Well, that's like higher education, you got to go lobby somebody else. But not us, but.
But if we go back to community on that, we'll have to pay them differently.
Yeah.
You can't pay teachers at the rate that they make now and expect them to be all the help.
I agree, yeah. I, I'm going to say something that probably won't be as popular, um, but I want you to think about, um, how many social workers are you saying we take? We had, la, last year we had one, I mean, how many are we saying, four at school, five at school? I get. But, but the population. I know, I know.
My question, my question to you is that we need people to that level. But I, I think we have to look at where those kids are most of the day in that classroom. What do we do inside the classroom for the teacher? We're talking about trauma, we're talking about everything outside the classroom, things that we can't control. What do we do while they're in that classroom to take off for the teacher? What can this community do to help the teacher? And I'm not saying those are not issues, but they're not going to go away. Last year we had more social workers, they were still there. We might have done. I'm still going back to the community training, you know, the, the community resiliency model then, you know? Because it was, it wasn't charging the school anything. And now, you know, I, I think that this, now we have to find a place in the budget for this, when you had the community coming in, right?
So that, the Crem model, the community resilience model, a lot of our teachers have had that training. It doesn't go to the in-depth level of how will you respond to the challenging behavior in the classroom and in that behavior continuum. So it's really, it's a much more in-depth and involved problem solving. We have resources, how do we get that vast implementation? That's really pricey. But I think that's where they need to.
Our kids are extraordinarily valuable, I don't know why this just isn't the top of everybody's budget. These kids are our future guys.
But some of this can be, if you, if you go back to the community engagement, which I'm think, I'm hearing you say, I'm going to look at Ms. Stackhouse, that I have convinced her to come be a reader with me, you know, in the first grade. And so what I've seen, I'm a huge PTA, PTO, you know, parent involvement person, have been for years. The, how do we get more bodies in the classroom that a teacher can meaningfully use? I mean, just dumping ten parents in a classroom doesn't necessarily end chaos, you know? But if you have, you know, things that, like another body in the room who's interested and invested, reading with, you know, a kid over in the corner, or doing, watching a center, you know, if you're in high school, be a motivational, one of the, one of the things at one of our tables, the student said, bring in more, she called a motivational speech guest, but she was talking about taking some of the load off the teacher so that they get more insight from community members. So there's lots of ways that you all here, you know, can, can contact a school or go to our community, a community outreach department. We have a whole program called Hands on Deck that we can match, you know, you want to help, you're, you're available from ten to twelve. You know, maybe Mr. Slovac needs something in that time, maybe he doesn't, but you know, another school does. So if I, but parent involvement is down and I, I can't, I can't put my.
Look, we're scared to death to go into the schools to get shot.
Well, the thing is, our schools really are the most safe place you can be. You're not, you should not have to worry seriously about getting shot in school.
You know for sure that no one can make it to your school?
No, I don't know that for sure, but I'm just telling you that our schools are so much safer than people realize.
How many shootings have we had in New Hanover County in the past three years?
Most schools United States can say that.
Excuse me?
That most schools United States can say they haven't had a shooting, it doesn't mean it's not going to be.
No, and I'm not, I'm not diminishing your.
But you're saying you're afraid because you're going to get shot, like we have shootings every week.
I'm sorry, I didn't miss, I missed what you said.
I said, you're saying you're afraid of going to the school because you're afraid you might get shot, like we have shootings every week.
No, I'm not saying like we have school.
No, it, it can be. I mean, I'm not, I didn't mean to diminish that.
Can I say, can I say something? It's, um, I just want to.
Some people are, some people don't.
It's interesting when I hear people say they're worried about the safety of the schools, so are the teachers and the principals not worried as well?
Of course.
But, but they show, but they show up because they're committed to make sure that the kids get learned, so there's, there's a lot.
No, no, no.
I want to go back to Ms. Crable's point. When I was, the district I went to, I actually started a program there, I was just telling him about this, but when I was a junior and senior in high school, and obviously it's a lot easier if you can fix these behaviors with children, when they are children and they're not almost adults. But I started a program where juniors and seniors would go into these freshman sophomore classes, be an assistant teacher, be a mentor in these classrooms, where these kids are maybe acting out, they're going to the bathroom and not coming back until the bell rings, stuff like that. And it's so much more effective when you have a peer, someone who's close in age with you, helping you and teaching you and being there for you, rather than having an adult. Obviously, having someone is fantastic, but peers are.
Peers. So many elementary schools do that, like the fifth graders read to the second graders. And I wanted to, you know, give a shout out for, you know, New Hanover High School, that they did a little research project within their school. The kids that had, they, they had their whole roster and they looked at which kids does anybody in the school have a relationship with. And there were a number of kids that had no, no anybody, no custodian, no cafeteria worker, no anybody. And then they matched that with those kids with their attendance. Lo and behold, their attendance was the worst. Their grades could be better. I'm not saying the worst, but grades could be better. So, you know, to your point, it's, it's, how do I assign people? Well, some of those people just gravitate, but you know, we could use those kinds of people, you know, you, you know, and you, you, you in our schools, being that person, if you have a skill or even just a tolerance, you know, coming into middle school is a whole world unto itself, but.
I would jump in four times up, I'm going to say something.
It takes one adult. And we have communities of schools that don't have that.
He's got forty-five seconds.
I agree with you. I've said it out loud, recorded. Our teachers have too much on them. They need to teach. And I've said it at the dais, we need to back off. The problem is we get these new programs and so they have to be trained. I get it. But at some point, we're going to have to stop it and see where we are. So we've got to have, we've got to deal with the concreteness of what can help, and not just every table, which I had written down, you won't believe all the stuff we've discussed tonight, which is wonderful, wonderful. But A, we have to ease off the teachers. They have to want to come to work, they have to feel like they can use their individual creativity. That's the principal's responsibility to work with them in school. Number two, you must understand that our budget constraints, we're talking about overcrowded schools. And now we're arguing about building to handle those overcrowded schools, yet we have people who.
And buying new curriculums every.
Well, we need to bus those kids from the overloaded.
Oh my gosh. If I walk into my kid's class one more time and see a new curriculum.
And we don't have the money to add to the schools.
She didn't hear that.
But teachers have to be left alone.
Yes. So I was just talking about the curriculums, Ms. Fason, the curriculums, every time I walk into my kid's class, I feel like there's a new curriculum, and it just is blowing my mind.
A new curriculum.
We haven't done any new math curriculum in three years, and this is the first year for.
The new ELA curriculum, there was a, two years ago, there was a new, like, we went from one thing to Desmos, and now we're not doing Desmos anymore. It's just, it's just, it's too much.
Well, you all, thank you for coming tonight and for enduring our speed dating, and look forward to hearing from you and getting your ideas. Yes, I'm a, I'm a professional educator, I'm very, very strong in my profession.
Do something, man. There's somebody that oversees that.
Good job, good to see you, good to see you. However.
One of the ladies, the lady of the.
You guys are.
I know a lot of social workers. Y'all, okay, so, oh.
I want to stay right here. I want to stay here. Can you imagine, if nobody comes?
Is this the same session?
Yeah. Well, I know that Ms. Fason, she said that she would now be. I don't know if it's more than that.
Okay.
I want to stay here. I want to stay here. Can you imagine, if nobody comes?
Is this the same session?
Yeah. Well, I know that Ms. Fason, she said that she would now be. I don't know if it's more than that.
She's taken.
Okay.
Like this stuff.
Right. I can hear it.
But it appears some county would do.
I think that would be.
They said that we could, yeah.
I know. I don't want to go there.
Like if I can stand there, I'm like.
Yeah. I know. I know. Half of them.
I know. But I couldn't get it to stop there. I think if you did, everything's changed. And what you were saying, that's part of their lesson. Oh, no, no, no. She like basically. You know, like that.
Well, I thought I was going to.
Well, something that I actually brought up at the EIA session last year, otherwise that, like, like. Guy goes, that's a good one. With, with a fourth grade curriculum, that they have to witness a third grade, that they have to. So what they're checking at times, given to say. I thought I could hear a ton of seventh grade. I was like, wait. I was going to look like a. You know, what time it is? Seven and. Okay, seven o'clock, so do I just need to. Either way, whatever is fine. And then there's a game on Friday. Is that a late?
Yes.
And she'll have to figure out how to. So what time does it start? He has an appointment out at Wrightsville Avenue. She wants to, to the. I'm wondering if I. I remember her eating the Westing game aloud to us.
So mine was, my seventh grade, um, she read Jameson.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And. We sang at the same. And then Josie has a piano, I'm going to put her on the chair. I think coming up with some electro guitar day, which is not really.
Welcome to thank you for your interest in having involved in this announced, updated discussion of school culture and being a supportive environment for teachers, students, and staff. It looks like everybody settled in, so we want to get right to the ground rules so we can kick this off. We kindly request that all attendees are in a respectful seat and are ordered to attend with the proper education, all the body, the seat, and rules of the court. Please at this time sign all cell phones and keep in touch. Go into discussion if you have one, just have a sign. Remain respectful, please, all attendees, refrain from using language that is rude or obscene. Shout out calling out and all the disruptive noises in the discussions if prohibited, and keep the discussion focused on school culture and creating a supportive environment for teachers, students, and staff. You are being recorded this whole time. These recordings will be made available on our YouTube channel, and that could be as soon as, uh, later tonight or as late as tomorrow. They will be available, um, this is table one over here in my lap, table two over here in table three, so that way if you're looking for your particular discussion, you can find it very easily. Okay, so it looks like we're all set. We're ready to go. Fifteen minute clock, sorry.
You want to start with, um.
Well, we want to do it, last time we didn't.
There was a bunch of people here from last year.
Oh, okay, 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 okay. Anybody new that needs, okay, oh yeah, these ladies.
Hi, I'm Catherine Charles. I'm the music specialist for Castle Payne, and this is about all the boys I've got right now. Singing. Yeah, that too. Allergies.
How long, if you don't mind me asking, how long have you been in Castle Payne?
How have I, yes, I am an organist. Um, I opened the school.
Oh, so you knew my wife then?
I know, uh-huh.
Okay, very good.
Yes, I know Kirsten.
Very good, very good, thank you.
I do.
I'm Angie Kaney. I am a parent and foster parent. I am also a social worker, not for the district, and I am a conscious discipline instructor, which is an SEO program.
Um, I'm Catherine Barrett. Um, I'm a parent of a first grader on Sunset Park Elementary School.
Thank you, everybody else in here.
I'm Sandy Isles, you know me.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't know if anybody. We were here last time.
I was at five tables, I just switched, so, different staff.
She followed me.
Hi, I'm Christina Bean from the communications division, I'm just taking some notes.
Why don't we do some other questions, other, you know, I mean, other, I mean, those, but maybe that.
That's exactly what I was going to do. Thank you, because I think, yeah, so we're going to jump down and do some of the additional questions, and I hope you guys haven't done this one. The school board and the superintendent are committed to building trust with our stakeholders. How do we go about doing that? Well, hear me, we're not asking what's wrong, we're not asking stories, we're asking, how do we go about building trust?
So I brought this up before, I won't go into the specifics as before, but when New Hanover County schools, one, when they mess up, acknowledge it, give us a solution. When, um, a parent, a teacher, or a student brings a problem to the district, acknowledge it, address it, solve it. Don't pretend it didn't happen, don't push it under the rug. Be honest and transparent.
I'm going to build off of that and say, it's kind of hard to ask as a question, though, but then say the perimeters that we can't really, like, specifically discuss something. So I think, like, communication is the reason that we don't trust the district. Because if there's things that the district doesn't want to hear, then they go to great lengths to silence us, and this is kind of an example of that.
And the reason I say that is not because we don't want to hear stories, it's because of time. Because what, before we've gotten into, everybody tells us all the issues and we never talk about how do we cope? So I didn't mean to silence you, that's what you're thinking. No, no, I apologize for that.
I did just, like, well, this forum is very confusing, like, I've been here for fifty minutes, and we just sit on the outskirts and we can't really hear or participate, and so, and this is very limiting, but I think communication is one thing, and like, I'm here because first and foremost, despite what I heard a couple of board members say, there's a major safety issue in our school, and I don't think we can address that if we don't talk about specific issues. And like, if you can't keep our kids safe, you can't teach them. And I don't really care about test scores when there's, you know, buildings that are unlocked and PAs that don't work and lockdowns that aren't being successful and things like that. So that's my primary reason for being here, is safety.
Let me take you back, and you could definitely speak on that, but I want to ask you, you said communication. What does that look like? Because I think that's, we always say communication, right?
Specifically, from this output, from this meeting, so that would be one way to build trust within your, your community, including with your administrators, your staff, that there's some sort of meaningful output from this meeting. And not that this happened and then there, nothing was ever brought up from anything that was said and no follow-up, because I did see people saying the last roundtable that there was not follow-up from that. So that's not really, you know, that would be effective communication.
I think that, I, two of my friends that, well, one of them is a former teacher, but the other one is, she comes to board meetings a lot, neither of them knew about this meeting. And that was a big issue because I'm really saddened to see that there were so many, so few people that signed up. How did you find out about it? When a parent, a teacher, or a student brings a problem to the district, acknowledge it, address it, solve it. Don't pretend it didn't happen, don't push it under the rug. Be honest and transparent.
I'm gonna build off of that and say, it's kinda hard to ask as a question, though, but then say, the perimeters, though, we can't really, like, specifically discuss something, so I think, like, communication is the reason that we don't trust the district. Because if there's things that the district doesn't wanna hear, then they go to great lengths to silence us, and this is kind of an example of that.
And the reason I say that is not because we don't wanna hear stories, it's because of time. Because what, before, we've gotten into, everybody tells us all the issues, and we never talk about how do we cope? So I didn't mean to silence you, that's what you're thinking.
No, no, I apologize for that. I did just, like, well, this forum is very confusing, like, I've been here for fifty minutes, and we just sit on the outskirts, and we can't really hear or participate, and so, and this is very limiting, but I think communication is one thing, and like, I'm here because first and foremost, despite what I heard a couple of board members say, there's a major safety issue in our school, and I don't think we can address that if we don't talk about specific issues, and like, if you can't keep our kids safe, you can't teach them, and I don't really care about test scores when there's, you know, buildings that are unlocked, and PAs that don't work, and lockdowns that aren't being successful, and things like that, so that's my primary reason for being here, is safety.
Let me take you back, and you could differ and speak on that, but I wanna ask you, you said communication. What does that look like? Because I think that's why we always say communication, right?
Specifically, from this output, from this meeting, so that would be one way to build trust within your, your community, including with their administrators, your staff, that there's some sort of meaningful output from this meeting, and not that this happened, and then there, nothing was ever brought up from anything that was said, and no follow-up, because I did see people saying the last roundtable that there was not follow-up from that, so that's not really, you know, that would be effective communication.
I think that, I, two of my friends that, well, one of them is a former teacher, but the other one is, she comes to board meetings a lot, neither of them knew about this meeting, and that was a big issue, because I'm really saddened to see that there were so many, so few people that signed up.
We didn't get any mail.
Um, one of the, like, sites that I follow on Facebook shared the event, and that's the only, only reason I knew about it.
It was you.
It was you.
Which is actually Sandy. I also, I found out about it also by watching the Equity, Diversion, and Inclusion Committee meeting, and it was mentioned that you wanted to use the data from the administration survey for this town hall, so I was looking for when y'all were gonna announce something about the town hall.
Yeah, there wasn't an email or a texting blast that sent out.
Nothing.
Is that normally...
I mean, if you wanna reach parents...
Yeah, I'm saying, normally, when we, did we do that last time? I'm not saying that's right.
I think so, I think so. Real quick, and I promise I'll let you go, last night, we had a parent forum for the ACES committee, we got two text blasts out, and we had seventy-some families show up, so I think you just have to be consistent with the communication, I'm done.
Okay, got it. But this, this meeting was poorly communicated, and the communication that I did finally see was very confusing. It said a participation meeting, it didn't, and then it said a town forum, and then it came down to it was going to be this roundtable setup. It took me the longest time to figure out, I needed to register, you know, and to find the link where you went to register. It was, this time, it was poorly done. I don't know what fell through the cracks, there wasn't a lot of forewarning that it was coming up, I think I found out Thursday, or Friday.
Me too, okay, so I've got acknowledgement, acknowledge and own up to mistakes, right? Communication, we're talking about building trust, we're gonna stay on that for maybe another minute or so? Anybody else have anything else?
Again, the one thing, then, it makes, it made me think, it made me feel, I don't know about it, because you're changing the process and trying not to make it be out there broad for everybody to see, I'm like, what are they trying to hide?
Tell me what, like what?
Because it was not well-known, you didn't know about it, you couldn't, you know...
Like, we're trying to hide something.
Like, you're trying to hide something. There's transparency for this meeting was really not there.
And unfair.
And then you change, you change the process of how you do things, it's like, every time, you change the rules of the game, it's like, okay, so you don't want me to play? Because you keep changing the rules.
I work a lot with parents, so I think advocacy groups are how, how information's...
So they can let other parents know.
But we try to do that, and even the parents that I work with are like, I'm not gonna come and waste my time and talk, and I even feel a little like this, too, and, and not be taken seriously, or not, there not be any follow-up, like you said...
I would love to know, because I, this, and I promise I'll be quiet. The follow-up, besides getting the information to you, because I don't want you to feel like you're wasting your time, because I know they want to, I think, this is what they, so what does that look like?
I don't, I'm not aware of any action items that came out of the last town hall.
Yeah, and what about a discussion that is, you know, either broadcast, or that people can attend, of your takeaways from this meeting?
Like, it should be spoken about at the board meeting, with, these are the things we're doing to address it.
At these meetings.
It's just not feasible for, like, there were twenty-one people on that first list, it's not feasible for twenty-one people to speak in an hour, that's less than the two minutes that they get for a crowded audience, you know, so it makes people feel like, really, am I gonna drive across Wilmington in traffic at five o'clock to not even get to, like, have a di- a real dialogue, you know?
So what would that look like?
Small groups.
Smaller groups.
And longer than fifteen minutes.
I think what it also would look like is that these, some of these items move to the agenda, and you guys actually talk about them, rather than, and then talking about how do you build trust, I feel like some of the policies that have been discussed lately about trying to, to me, as a former educator, they would put me on, on edge. And I feel like you have to... Policy thirty-two hundred, I have it written down, hold on.
What is that?
Um, policy seventy-two oh five, and specifically, section Z, specifically, number six.
That's the parent rights one?
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
I have a lot of, as a former educator, I find that troubling, because, number one, that is currently stalled in North Carolina legislature, number two, it was just that exact language, that exact policy was just used in South Carolina, to, in the Lexington-Richland Five district, to remove a book from curriculum and attempt to fire a veteran teacher because two students complained to the school board that the book made them feel uncomfortable and ashamed to be Caucasian, and so I think that there needs to be, and I, and in watching the meetings, this was discussed amongst the board and the committee members, that there, it needs to be clear, because you're crossing, and there's too much overlap with instruction, there are gonna be things that are part of instruction that might make people feel uncomfortable, and I think that that's just really exposing the teachers to a situation where they could be attacked, and I, and I don't like that.
They didn't ask to be on the front line.
That doesn't feel like a way to build trust with your teachers.
And if I could follow up, if I could follow up on that, at the policy meeting this morning, that was discussed, and it was decided by the policy committee to remove the word equity from that policy, and I'm sorry, I know the politics, I know equity, diversion, inclusion is something that some of our politicians want to eliminate, but I'm sorry, equity means doing what is right for each child, and some people keep trying to say, well, that's equality, no, and the image that's always gets, gets used, that should get more, used more, is, well, the, okay, best, best one, you've got a, a person standing in front of an elephant, a monkey, a fish in a bowl, on a stand, a frog, and a human, and he said, we have to have an equal test, we have to test, everyone is tested equally, you all have to climb that tree.
And the fish can't do it.
The fish can't do it, frog can't do it, the elephant would have a hard time, well, that's not equity, equity is making sure each child has what they need, even if that's different from what other kids need, and it's not something that we need to quit shoving, we need to quit shoving it under the rug.
Also, don't we want our kids to be successful in the workforce? Isn't the workforce, I mean, by and large, moving to DEI as a standard? Why would we not want our children to also have that same approach and understanding? I, I don't get that, that makes no sense.
And I think also, when we're talking about trust, I have heard board members speak, say disparaging things about staff members from the dais and accusing them of grooming, and that does not build trust, when we are attacking our teachers from the dais, that puts, I mean, that, it's demoralizing, like, it's, who wants to go to work when they're not trusted by their own school board, so if we wanna build trust, we gotta trust teachers, like, they're in it because they care about our kids.
I just wanna say, it's two minutes, and I know our board members haven't had a chance to say...
This is I'm gonna say, so they can listen to this, because, they, for me, coming here and see how they distrust each other, it's only seven people, and they don't even trust each other.
It's a statement on society.
It is.
Yes, it is.
So if you wanna change, it's not just changing the school board, you gotta work with your communities to change.
The discussions and...
That's not gonna change just in the school.
Things need to move away, discussions and decisions that are being made need to move away from anticipating confrontation, the whole curriculum meeting where y'all were talking about the checklist, and there was, Ms. Bradford in particular, she really wanted there to still be something like a checklist, and it was specifically because, it was specifically because she did, she didn't want another book appeal to happen, and I, I find that, I, I don't, I mean, it wasn't good, I understand that, it was hard, it was a hard situation, but I don't, I had a point, I wrote it down, but I'm trying to...
And I say, though, to the point, I'm glad you guys listened to that meeting, and Ms. Mason was there, I think we've, we've come to a part, we haven't passed anything, but I think we all, I think teachers were hurt, I think teachers...
I agree.
I think they listened.
I agree.
Now, I'm, you know, I'm not a, you see I push back, so I'm not just stroking it, but I think they were listening, so I think...
No, I thought it was a very thoughtful discussion.
I enjoyed several of the, the input from staff in that meeting, and I really was proud of them for advocating for themselves.
But I'm also surprised that they put themselves at risk.
Me too.
Because I wouldn't...
It's not at risk, though.
Like, the Sam book, she, her, her career's on the line right now. I mean, we had a teacher that brought students, which I thought we were encouraging, and she got dragged from, from the chair, the things that were said to her, these are the things that...
When you're in the job, it feels dangerous.
And I know, I know people who are currently teaching...
And I'm not speaking up by their principal.
It was during our principal's meeting, that they, that they say it, the teachers should not come to board meetings or speak at board meetings without express permission of their principal.
You know, and you know what I would say, because I remember a principal meeting where we were specifically told, your teachers can come and don't try to stop them, so I would love for, it's really, because it was set at the board meeting, and so it was, it was like, God, anybody can come and speak.
Yeah, that, I think that...
So that's very interesting that you say that.
I think that was rescinding what happened. Anyway, I'm, I'm coming from, I did not, I was one of the, I was told that by a colleague.
So, do you guys wanna stay? This is your time, because you have two different people, do you wanna switch topics? Do you wanna tell them what you... She's like, yeah, I'm done.
Trust is such a big one, I mean, there's lots of space for trust, but there are people we haven't...
Okay, okay, so we've got two goals that we're gonna try to do in this one, we wanna stay with trust, and then we wanna go to safety, okay? Is that, is that a consensus?
Win many, win many.
Okay, so the question was, and the board members didn't introduce themselves, I'm sure they...
Hi, my name is Josie Walker.
Stepwalker.
Okay, and teachers and educators at the table?
Three or four.
Educators?
Four.
Okay, all right, um, parents? Okay, everybody else? So the question that we were talking about, and was, the school board and the superintendent are committed to building trust in our, in our stakeholders, how should we go about doing that? There were a couple of things that were already said, acknowledge when we make a mistake, own up to it, communicate more, and transparency, and I'll be quiet and let them or anybody else speak.
I wanna add one, repair. I think that is so important, and there are some communities in our, you know, city that, or district that are, they, they need repair.
So how do we repair, tell us?
That is a really good question, I, I don't know the answer to that.
How do we repair this trust?
What was it, like, stress?
Oh, acknowledge, communication, transparency, repair. So she said repair, how do we repair trust, because you have to repair it?
I think, just to, and this is the last time I'll talk about it, I promise, with the, with the appeal hearing, okay, I think that it really, if I was still teaching, it would have been a real hit to me to know that this book that went before three other, three other times, it was up, and it was, and it wasn't of the teacher, it was the school MTAQ, and then it was the district MTAQ, which was comprised of all the very people that we're here talking about today, and it, they all agreed that the book was appropriate for AP Lang, and aligned to the standards, and yet it was overrode. And so, that's...
People who don't have an educational degree.
That, that's a big, that would be a big, you know, repair, that's an area to, to repair, and my, I would think, what I, I think there needs to be less focus, as a parent, I think there needs to be less focus on the parents, and more focus on the schools, and who's in the schools, and not...
The kids?
The parents, and the parents being mad about this, that, and the other, so...
Well, if we're talking about healing, and I just say one thing, that, and I promise I'll stop with this one, too, but like, I mean, we just spent five years in a court process with victims of sexual assault, and a part of that settlement was that we were going to make sure it never happened again, less than a month later, our timeline coordinator, we pushed him out the door by hiring this Vogel company or whatever, so if you wanna talk about healing, not just healing from the victims, because maybe a lot of people think, well, we're not currently in the schools, but that was a huge thing for our community, and, and like Sandy said, there was no accountability, there was no, I'm sorry, there was no, this is how we're gonna do it moving forward, we ha- we aren't doing anything to make sure that ever happens again, and so, there's no healing for them, there's no healing for us, there's no healing for people who, like, fought for them, and I think that if you don't have that healing piece, if you don't make reparations, then how can you make change moving forward?
I also think for healing, we've gotta look at our facilities and the discrepancies that we're seeing, New Hanover High School versus Ashley and Hoggard, and, you know, Laney's got how many gyms, and New Hanover barely has a functioning one, Laney's overcrowded, and that school, it's gonna tie into your whole safety thing, you know, when we talk about equity, I don't know why that is such a scary word, and when we've got schools in the downtown area that are struggling, but then we've got Wrightsville Beach Elementary School that has, like, a brand-new dock and a brand-new school building, and those white kids are getting this really beautiful facility, and their test scores are way up, and everybody's loving that school, but then Rachel Freeman is struggling, like, that, that breaks trust in that community, in those communities, and it doesn't do anything to repair it, so we have to value the kids in our Title I schools and in our broken, or, with the buildings that are literally falling apart as much as we value the kids in Wrightsville Beach.
We definitely have a special about Hanover, and I'll say that's because, because I went there, and it is not much different than it was before, and actually, we had an event, it's NASCAR event, and like, this auto mechanic's, looks exactly the same as when I went there, and I think it's great we have it, and I think, I love Hanover in a lot of different ways, but it's, it's absolutely clear, we went and met, met with some parents there, the avocats, I think they call themselves, and they showed us what Laney and Hoggard has compared to what they have, and, you know, ah, every year, it's a money question, it's a money question, but, like, I feel like, I talk about political will a lot, because I feel like if we have the will to wanna change it, we can do it, but it's gotta take the people that are in power, that have the purse strings that will help us do that, because we can't wish money out.
Well, and the focus, right, like, why are we focusing on things like reviewing books that already have policies in place? That is a waste of time.
And New Hanover High School doesn't have working air conditioning in other classrooms.
It's a, it's a waste of time.
So, can I, in, in terms of funding, someone, another parent had told me this, and I'm just wondering if it's true, in other places that I've lived before, when developers come in and develop, they have to give money to the county for developing, does that happen here? Because I was told it doesn't, but it could, because they inquired, and it could, but we're choosing not to.
Absolutely could. I think, though, they used to do that, but I think somebody had a lawsuit of some sort, and it got stopped, because there used to be funds that the developer had to pay, even for infrastructure, because you go and build all these houses, you gotta make sure the infrastructure can work.
I mean, as far as the capital budget, we did receive extra money from the county commissioners, they, they raised it up.
Yeah, but I'm talking about, yeah, the county commissioners, what I'm saying, when, when all these folks coming in, wanting to build these apartments and these housing developments, years ago, they had to pay a fee to the, to the county, okay, so that's where some extra money did come into the county, and then they, they decided to, to fight that, and, and, and file the lawsuit, and I think they had to stop doing that, but you're absolutely right.
And as citizens, I think we all can, because I didn't know that, I mean, like, God, as citizens, we should advocate for that, let me, because I promised you the safety thing.
Well, can I say something first? To your point about, this all ties into the affordable housing issue here.
Right.
I mean, rent's gone through the roof, our, I mean, we're happy our, our mortgages, we have a lot more equity, but at the same time, that kind of like pushes people out, but also, and it causes strain economically for people, I think we could have better policies when it comes to proving developments that also allow for some affordable housing as well at the same time, and other municipalities do that, there are plans for that, I don't know why it went away, and I would love to find out.
And, and what they're doing now is they're only saying, they're doing two hundred apartment, okay, they can do fifteen or twenty as affordable.
Right.
For ten years, for ten years, so after ten years...
See, and other people do that, other folks do it.
Well, and Ms. Sidbury brought that up a lot in your EDI meeting, and in terms of safety, you know, I would think one way to be, one, one way to get, to, to get to safety would be more bodies in the building, but as Ms. Sidbury brought up, they can't afford to live here, so, and you gotta work with the county commissioners.
That's not something the school board can fix, but it's something we can advocate for. Yeah, to your point, there was a time, like, I'm gonna advocate for Laney for a second, because I've been, I've lived in Wilmington my whole life, Laney looks the same as it in nineteen ninety-three when I graduated, and like, there, it's way overcrowded, seven buildings, it's arguably the most unsafe school in the district, and so, at one point, a lot of that is because it is so severely overcrowded, we had kids hit in front of Laney last year, like, ran over one, air lifted, to UNC, we had fights every single day, we have teachers injured, we have the highest turnover of teachers in New Hanover County.
Highest class sizes, too, right?
Exactly, exactly, and so, like, what, but at one point in time, there was this plan to use the land adjacent to Laney and expand that campus, land development's what happened there, and that's why it's not happening, and so now, we're left with things like, for, since the beginning of school, there's not a working PA system, you can't call a lockdown if you don't... I understand, it's being, but when is it being taken care of? Right, right, they're there right now, I know they're there right now.
But how long has it been without, yeah?
We've been talking about this for, forever, and hold up for a second, last year, we had a... Last year, we had a lockdown at Laney, last year.
You had a what?
We had a lockdown at Laney. And they called that lockdown and they couldn't hear in the cafeteria. A third of that school thought it was shelter in place, a third thought it was a real lockdown, and a third thought it was a lockdown drill. It was in fact a real lockdown. There were gunshots in the field behind there. The kids didn't know, kids were tackled into a cafeteria. Teachers don't have working radios, teachers are getting injured there. And so the ant, the, the bell schedule doesn't work, so you just guess when you need to go to class and give out like, you know, so like after-school detention and whatever, just because. Um, I mean, there's all, like, all of those things, like, they don't, they're understaffed. So how can teachers even get to these fights that are not just one or two people like pushing each other, you know?
And why are the fights happening? Because like, I don't want to blame the kids for this. Because we put them in an incredibly broken system. And they're not to blame, the parents aren't to blame, the teachers aren't to blame. It is the people who hold the purse strings and the budget. And the people who are making the policies at the state level, and I'm sorry, Stephanie, but even here at the local level. Um, because what I'm seeing is that the board is making a lot of decisions, but they're not taking into account how the teachers are going to actually live up to that expectation. I'm going to bring up seclusion rooms, because we got rid of the use of seclusion rooms. But what have we replaced it with? So when the board is making decisions and they're not providing the alternative tools, and I know you, um, we've talked about this, um, that breaks trust and that is a safety issue.
Break, what about the kids right now that are being, um, and their classes are being interrupted by dog searches?
Well, but we can't have therapy dogs? Like trauma?
Oh, yeah.
Well, and, and at my child's school, they've had, they're on their third bathroom policy in five weeks. Um, and it's incredibly, it started off with they were all going to the bathroom as a class, and then they were letting them go two at a time. And now it's, they're using the computer, which apparently I got a 20-minute rant from my son about it last night. Apparently, it's a 25-minute process, they're only letting three kids out per grade, per core class.
Can I just say something? Can I, can I say?
Because of safety issues in the bathrooms.
But this is what I'll say, guys. That's true for bathrooms.
Yeah.
And they might do it another time. They're going to keep doing it until they can get those kids as safe as, it is not, I hear you with that. But put yourself in the teacher's shoes.
No, I absolutely, I am.
Put yourself in the principal's shoes.
No, we are.
Keep trying until we get it right. I don't know what money would fix it.
But Dr. Faison, here's what we know. We know what works to fit school culture, and we're doing the complete opposite of it.
We had a multimillion dollar Safe Schools Grant that handed us on a silver platter what to do, and we chose not to do that. So tell me some of the, tell me, tell me some of the things you would do. Well, if you look at the SEL, we know that SEL changes the climate of the school. I mean, could we maybe get five hours to talk about safety and SEL as opposed to like banning a book? No, they're not going to do that, like, they don't want to talk about it.
And we realize the importance of SEL. We all know, we, we know, we have to do that.
Yeah, but not all board members support that. And when we, we don't do it with fidelity. And then when we look at, um, student-teacher ratios, that is a safety issue. You've got to decrease those so that teachers can actually build those relationships with our kids. And when we adopt a program, we got to do it. Like, do it for real.
Didn't we adopt a program?
Well, lives in the balance.
The life in the balance.
Like, they brought that in, but
But then they, they paid all the money for it and nobody got the training.
Well, some people got the training, but it wasn't
But it didn't span beyond those, what, five?
But we know what to do.
And the biggest issues with that, because there are so many good things. Julie and I are thinking about something really good now. You know what my biggest issue is? It is not money, it is time. When are we going to pull teachers out of their dream?
Well, right.
We got one more thing. What is that going to happen?
It's not.
I think, maybe, maybe Part of the reason why teachers don't have time is because we don't have enough teachers. And they're being asked to do too much stuff. If we could take the burden off of them so they weren't bombarded with paperwork, if our E.C. teachers weren't spending all day long in IEP meetings and doing paperwork after paperwork and having
Begging each other to cover their classes so they can use the bathroom. Have you looked at, have you looked at an IEP? Oh, God, just to be a breath of luck.
The teachers would have time if we took the burden off of them.
I think that, I know it's not pretty, I know it's not pretty, but I think maybe focusing a little less on the celebrations and all the things that are wonderful and being more transparent. And that this is a good step in that direction. But being more transparent about what is broken at each individual school and what they really need. Like, I know, like, I, I volunteer and I do the eagle watch and I walk the hall for an hour. And I know they need that. And they say like, hey, just having you here on a weekly basis and same face and these kids are seeing you, it really is important and it matters. But I think if more, but I can tell you, because I see the signup list, they're not getting nearly enough people signing up to do this. Same with like, I volunteer in the library, same thing. Like, she can't get I think that you, I think you need to be, I think there needs to be more transparency about what is really broken and what they really need help with. And maybe parents would be like, oh, okay, wait, I really do need to make time to get in the school.
Sharing that with you, because at the district level, remember, you, you were here at the last session. We, we, there, the district, if you try to do something too big, it doesn't get, it's not effective, because every school doesn't need the same thing.
Right, right.
So I hope the principals, and we can talk about, are encouraging you and educating you as parents about the reasons behind things and the way you can help. But if you do that at a district level, we can do certain things, but it needs to be school related.
I agree.
So I totally agree with you on that.
And you have to make sure when you ask for a volunteer, that you, you know, somebody may think, oh, they're looking for me to do something in the classroom like a teacher would do. And you need to let them know, well, no, we just need a volunteer that can walk the hall.
I ain't even ready.
All we need is you to have two good legs. Or you can use your wheelchair, or you can use a walker. It doesn't matter, just walk the halls.
Right.
You know?
It's like, there are macro problems and there are micro problems.
Absolutely.
Identify what the macro problems are, which you
The macro, we can
You know?
I appreciate all of you being here.
Teacher burnout.
Nice to meet you too.
The micro, the
See you again. Yeah, thanks for, thanks for letting me in. I appreciate it.
And they spend time in the meeting.
Well, I mean, like, I can't volunteer in schools because I work full-time. So like, there's also that issue, but I think
What are you doing now?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I'm always after hours, but I, I do worry that, like, we can't run our schools on volunteers. And I, I do hope that we're not replacing staff with volunteers. I did not, this isn't a reflection of you, but when I look at the funding coming to our schools, when I look at some of the decisions that are being made for staffing, that I worry that we are putting volunteers in positions where they're not necessarily qualified. Having a kid with an IEP, um, the last thing I need is a volunteer coming in and not understanding her needs and responding incorrectly. Not for volunteers so much, not on how to support children.
When I look at volunteer, nothing really worth it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's one area where you can pull from. Like, I think Bear and Wedge, they get out early in the afternoon. If they could provide transportation. Did I bring that to you? Because my daughter's at I think, like, they have to get so many hours of volunteer. Like, they should be able to read with kids. Like, we get partnerships among schools.
Yeah, it's okay.
See, now somebody wants to order. Um, anybody else?
Yes, please.
I'll take that.
See, now, now
Ms. Faison, are we keeping you from speaking? Because I don't want to do that.
So, we have, we, we started, guys, talking about, we've already talked about two questions, and I'm going to let, uh, I don't, um, let the team here say, we talked about building trust, and I just want to tell you what they say.
Yeah, thank you.
Because I don't know if they want to talk about that again.
Okay, okay.
But, um, acknowledging our mistakes when we make a
I just want to make sure, like, I don't want to talk overuse of that.
Transparency, repairing the relationship, and focusing on the repairing and the healing. Those are some of the things that we
Repairing and the healing of what?
The broken trust and communication. So that's what we talked about. We also talked about safety. So, um, Well, perfect example, and I don't want to talk about what she's talking. I was going to say, you want to share what she shared earlier about what she would see about communication? Who asked that question?
Me?
Yeah, what did you, you said, I said, what does it mean to communicate? And you said, like, what do you mean by communicating?
Well, one of the things I said is that we would see output from this, this specific meeting. Um, because I had seen someone say the last town hall meeting, there wasn't any follow-up. Um, and there's certain things in watching, I've watched like 20 hours of school board meetings in the last week. And I asked my, I didn't, I started to watch the agenda meeting, but I was like, this is way too long, I can't watch this right now. But I did, I, I was like, is this, because I, I believe, there was a group that had many people come and speak. I think you were involved. And I was like, is this going to go on the agenda? Because there's like a lot of people here talking about this. So I would think like, that should go on the, so I think for, for me as a parent, someone who's invested in the community and watching this stuff, that communication would look like follow-up and output.
Well, see, that's, that's one reason
So I 100% agree with all this, but the average parent, well, apparently I am, is not, is not paying attention to half of what I'm paying attention to, right? I didn't find out about this meeting, so my principal, I'm a walker. We walk to school, so I walk past the principal every day, and he said, hey, you.
Which, which school are you at?
Sunset Park.
Okay.
Um, so, um, and so, you know, I'm, so I'm not an avid, I'm not an avid school board person. I now feel like I need to be, but, um, I'm interested. What about just consistency with communication across the schools? You know, um, so I'm of a age in which I have a first grader. Many of my friends, we all have kindergartners, first graders, we're all getting started, we're all new to this, you know? All of us seem to be using different systems, sorry, just one moment. Different systems, different methods, we're having, being outreach in different ways. I assume because we've got Sunset Park, we've got Wrightsville Beach, we've got You know, we've got all these different schools that play here. But I walk into kindergarten for the most part, and I'm like, I don't know, I just showed up here and I feel like I'm a pretty educated. I am an educated person, I pay attention. I looked it up, I got on Facebook, I started searching all the things. But if I didn't invest that extra time, I wouldn't know anything about what I was needing to do to prepare.
For this meeting? For this meeting?
Not just for school.
Oh, okay.
You know, there's a, there is a proactiveness and a consistency across the schools that could just be done. Use the same communication channels. Like, what is, what are, what
What do you, can I ask her something? What do you mean? Like, give me an example, because usually the, when you talk about teachers in school Like
Flash Stowjo.
There's Flash Stowjo and there's Power or
Power School.
Power School is consistency.
That's the state, that's the state.
Right, you don't
You do, you, 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 so, so what I hear
Well, elementary school parents don't log in.
Elementary, it's not, it's not a lot for them, but yeah.
Yeah, but so like, this is all, so, but what I, so here, we need a little trust. How do I know this?
That's what, yeah, yeah, exactly.
Oh, you have something that I don't? Oh, is that because I go to a Title I school? I don't know.
Yeah.
Question for you. How was this? I know how I got it. We've got emails, but tell me how this was announced to the
Not well.
Social media.
But, but tell me how we did
Social media, that's it. There was no email, no text. There, there was
She wants to tell you, she wants to tell you, she wants to tell you.
Hugh, let me tell you. Peter sent out a message, you know who Peter is? Peter sent out a message to our group and said, did anybody hear anything at the board meeting about the town hall meeting? And I said, I didn't, I'll go back and watch the video. I, I, and I had left just after, um, just before you guys went into closed session. So I started the video, watching it at that point, and I fast-forwarded through closed session. And at the very end in the announcement, Pete Wildenbears, Wildenbor, ran off this list of meetings that were happening in the next month, including, oh, on Tuesday, the, whatever, we have the town hall meeting, blah, blah, blah. Do Hanover County Educational Justice, Sandy just picked that up. We started putting out messages on Facebook. About a week ago, a message came out on Facebook on the school districts.
That's when I put it down.
Just a little, just a little bit.
It was not done well evidently, so we're going to get that taken care of.
Like, three days later, it was the, the banner on the, uh, school district's website. That was it.
And then there was, there was just recently
This is a really good point.
A press release from
And I know the principal at Sunset is a really engaged principal, and that's a positive thing.
Well, she has a new one, and he's really engaged too. You know the new one too?
Oh, yeah, yeah. He's there too. And so
But joint educational justice
She's right, like, it shouldn't be like, at the little, like, pockets, like, it shouldn't really matter. Because going back to like, the, um, community engagement, like, I can't give enough props to Mr. Madden and Mr. Sutton, the principals at Hoggard and New Hanover. They're welcoming, they're engaging with those community, like, people who want to be in those schools. But there are two other, there's at least one other high school in that, like, we, I myself have rallied as an advocate and put like, at, like, volunteers that I've talked them through the volunteer two process. Like, we talked about places where, you know, their strengths could be used and they were completely shut down and unwelcome. So I have their emails where they quit, they said, this is a waste of my time. And like, so parents shouldn't be hunting for what happened. And then when you, when you do have a concern, like, and you go to your principal and you say, like, you were talking about earlier, with like, the not working P.A. systems and things like that, it's been a year that that's been going on. And we went, a lot of us have gone to our principals and been told, that ain't happening, because they don't want to talk to us. And like, no, like, I just visited a kid in the hospital, but you're telling me that you didn't have a fight to that degree, like, in your school.
Right, you just have to be honest.
That's not okay.
But see, some of that stuff, Angie, you know we're not allowed to talk about.
I know you're not allowed to talk about it.
No, I mean, none of us are allowed to talk about it, yeah.
Well, I'm going to talk about it. My kid goes to the school, it's the job of this district to keep them safe. It's also the job of this district to not have parents sitting around a table saying, how do we even get here? Because you guys don't have a working way of communicating.
So I would say
With a late PR team
Yeah, the Parent Academy.
Parent Academy, we, no, we've done a lot of blasting on that, uh, about the
Oh, was that right before school started?
Yeah, that's Julie's, yeah, we're, we're doing that.
There's another way, there's another app.
No, it's not an app, it's not an app either.
I think that, so I didn't attend that, um, what I want to say is, one of the things that, yeah, I think that there's so many things the district can do to improve communication. One, after a school board meeting, a summary going out to the entire school district, all the families. This is what we talked about. These are the policies and this is, but it has to be in plain language. We can't have policy 3200, blah, blah, blah. Like, it needs to be, we talked about curriculum. This is how this impacts your child. If you want to learn more, this is who you reach out to. Another thing that, um, schools can do for, or that the district can do, and I begged Dr. Faust for this when he first started here. Quarterly emails from him, personal emails to our community so that we know who he is. But his communication has to be about the things we care about. I don't think most parents care too much about test scores. I don't think most parents care too much about test scores. We care about safety, we care about trust, we care about, you know, great things that are happening in the district, but Dr. Faust doesn't talk to us. He doesn't communicate at all, I think I've gotten maybe two emails from him that went out to the entire district in the, how many years he's been here. He's gotta talk to us, but he's gotta talk to us as real people. So I think school board summaries in plain language and points out the things that were discussed that impact our children and how it impacts our children, it would be a huge thing, and then if Dr. Faust, maybe their summary should come from Dr. Faust. I don't know, but Dr. Faust has talked to us.
I agree with that, and I, like, I was encouraged for a second when you said trust and communication in the beginning when we started this, and like, normally, Ms. Crowe, you know, I agree with you on like, so much.
Nothing, but now, but more, more, more coming along. We've gone through a metamorphosis, which is good.
We agree on, on the issues, we might not agree on how to treat people and talk to people, but we agree on the issues. But what we do not agree is, don't invite me and waste my time and tell me that I can't ask a question, or we can't talk about those things. My kid goes to a school, and if kids are injured and students, students and staff are injured to where they are long-term in the hospital, I'm gonna ask a question, and if y'all don't want to answer it, I'm gonna go to the news and ask them. You can't tell people, we can't talk about those things, and then turn around and say, trust me.
Right.
I think what she was...
No, no, what I was saying with that is that there are certain, like, FERPA issues, FERPA issues.
Do you want to talk about FERPA?
No, no, that, that we are not, we can acknowledge that there was a fight.
You got a teacher here.
Yes, we can acknowledge, we can acknowledge the severity of that, because your family, my family doesn't want everybody to know, you know, so there are certain things that we can say, we can acknowledge incidents, but we can't acknowledge a lot of the specifics.
There's not identifying factors, I've been a social worker for 25 years, I wouldn't do that, but I work with some of these families.
Ladies, let's let the teacher get in. Let's let the teacher get in.
So, I agree with her. Let's say you have a child, and they got into a terrible fight, and it was their fault. First of all, it's to protect your child.
Bless you, bless you.
It's not that we don't want that kind of information out, we, if your child was a minor, do you, do you want your child's name out there?
Did I say somebody's name? I'm very...
No, no, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, that's what she's saying.
What I have...
I understand what she's saying, and I just want to clarify, because I have a job too.
Yeah.
I never would break confidentiality, I've been speaking as board for five years, and you know this, that I don't. But I, if somebody's advocating for the safety...
Yes.
Of my kid, and I think talking about working PA systems and radios, I know that the teachers, and if y'all are listening right now, they know that I'm advocating for them, because it's not safe for them to sit around this table and advocate for this.
And I can tell you that we've advocated with you, with the vendors, because they did not want to be here as early as they are. So we are with you, not to say, right, so that's been taken care of, we have two and a half minutes. And I want to just ask one question. Is there anything that you want to share that's good, that's working right, to leave on a positive note? What are we doing right? Because I know we talked about the entire time, things that we need to change. I know some of you love your teachers, I know some of you love your principals, what are we doing right?
Well, sometimes you don't have...
Go ahead.
Loretta, go ahead. Sometimes, leaving on a positive note is not the most important thing. I think leaving with the knowledge of what we, the parents, the community, the public sees needs to be addressed is more important.
I agree, I just want to know something that we could, it's like, I wanted to do something so we could continue to do those things, I want to learn.
Well, we started, we started, the first, we started the first hour talking about the things that have worked, that's what Pete wanted. And it was like, okay, yeah, but...
You did both hours, I didn't, I just wanted, remember?
So, I mean, I will bring up the ACES committee again, because we did a parent forum yesterday, and we had over 70 parents, and I think that we need to have those opportunities more often, and it really helped the parents.
The committee, I think that the board meetings and the way that the district is conducting themselves, if you're, the ultimate goal was to change the perception of the district and central office, I believe is what it was, like, wrote too much, I can't find it. But, um, I think the committee meetings are much more productive. I was relieved when I watched the committee meetings, because people were working together, and they were much more productive, and the curriculum meeting in particular, it really felt like most people were on the same page, and that you really were listening to the feedback that y'all were getting from the teachers, and the guiding questions seemed like a much more reasonable and realistic, there was a lot of discussion about, you're not gonna be able to implement this list, with the principal can't do that, this is, you know, and I thought that that was really productive. And so I think maybe if what the public is seeing, what the most of, is more in that vein, would be, would be helpful. And I also think that maybe evidence that we're being listened to would be through actions, through actions, and not discussions of things that I found to be important.
And if I wasn't clear, teachers and counselors and all that that I work with are freaking amazing. Any of, any of my concern is the district and the board of management issues, I have no interest.
Well, we thank you guys. And I, you know, and I didn't mean to just, the sugarcoat, I was just trying to figure out those things like ACES, the committee, we need to do more of those type of things than just in here. And it's like, honestly, I don't even think, you forget people are watching, and you wonder, how many people actually are watching these committee meetings? So I am so glad, and I am so glad that you referenced that, because you listen.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
And our committee meetings, if you note, they are run by you guys, the school system people, and board members are invited guests. So there's not an opportunity so much for opinion sharing, you know, and you must do, it's more, it's more or less you guys just doing your job.
But the other thing I want to say is...
It's like, over 1,000? Ooh, more people watch school board meetings than they watch county commissioner meetings.
That's true, that's true, but the thing is, it's better to watch it at home than to sit here in this room, because the sound, it's, you can't hear in this room, the acoustics are bad, and the board does not speak in their mic. It's like, they'll put the microphone on, push the button, and turn this way to talk, so that you can't hear what they're saying. And I think some of them do that purposely.
The French is going here.
Yeah, I think some of them do that purposely, but if you're at home, you get a better, you hear it a lot better.
Yeah. Yeah. On YouTube, on the recording. And it will show you, like, how many people have watched it.
Yeah, Dr. Faison.
Yeah, I just don't think about that. I do it sometimes.
October 3rd, 638 people have viewed it so far.
The board meeting?
For October 3rd, yeah.
638?
Let me find that.
It may already be happening in schools, I'm not sure, but having something like this within the individual schools...
So like, we just, so let me just say, we have 25,000.
Yeah.
We have 25,000.
We're not to 25,000, 26,000.
The last time.
I know it's over 25,000. Yeah, so I, yeah, so, I, we do have a parent advisory committee, we just started. Um, so, they met a couple of weeks ago, I heard it was phenomenal, I couldn't be there.
How were parents selected for that?
So, okay, so we'll take a...
The principal selected. I'm pretty sure, it's Title One, it's from the federal programs, but it's Title One schools and non-Title One schools, and I heard that it was phenomenal, they really said that.
Here are all the views, so with this one, you scroll down, it says right under the title.
Um, so, this curriculum meeting.
I think it's like 160-something people watched. Not today, Leslie, you watched the policy meeting today.
I was.
I tend to listen to them while I work if I can, and then I get too mad and I turn them off. Did you miss them? Yeah. No, that's what I'm saying, is that we... Yeah. Oh.